What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at Edza. So let's get started.
I'm how you pulled that off with a straight face.
Why you say that?
Cause we just.
Yeah, he's rehearsed, he's got it down. I like a men raise, I think.
I'm limping. I would limit this one. I would go all in with the offsuit. Raising.
I do agree, you're gonna be jamming probably the offsuit middling ones.
All of them.
But I. Yeah, that makes sense, maybe off fifteen, I hadn't looked at these ranges, I have no idea to be quite honest.
I'm mostly called. Thing is, it can, my mind can call a raise kind of easily, but five big blinds.
You gotta put it, you gotta put it in, right? You just gotta put it in.
Do you?
Yep.
What else you gonna do?
No.
I mean, you're gonna be playing like an SPR point five, you gotta basically go like a king high flop or something like.
Okay, it's a job. Let's look at the solution.
You're just gonna make a lot of mistakes if you call here on the flop. I think.
By limping, you let him have a lot of bluffs, so we just gotta go with it.
It is weird, though, that he went five X. Yeah, like if you have, basically, you're just running your equity with almost everything here.
Yeah.
I'm surprised. King nine off. Calling quite a bit.
What's his range look like, what she's supposed, would you like, I never see this, so I'm just curious with stone.
It's gonna be polar.
So he has two raise sizes. And three, technically.
Yeah, it's probably fine. I like jamming this one, I think.
Forty big blind.
Oh, wait, sorry, I was autopiloting, I like raising this one.
I like call.
See, man, this one plays like trash post flop is my only problem.
Forty means we can kind of limp everything, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that's what you do at forty, I feel like at forty, you probably wanna be V Pippin, or not V Pippin, but raising, but I don't know.
Fifty fifty.
Let's have a quick look at this.
I put the same way, mostly a left out, fifty fifty.
They're resting, we're mostly raising sixty percent of the time.
Yeah, this, this doesn't surprise me too much.
Do we not wanna treat this like we're in this mobile line, like we're on a button and kinda like almost normal situations, cause on the button, we raise ace two off there, but we drop it out of a range on the cutoff.
It's a little bit different. Like, it's, I don't hate the way you're describing that, it's just, you need to be even wider than you are on the button, unfortunately.
Okay.
Like, look at this range, like it's. You rarely, you rarely fold anything.
Yeah, the button, we usually drop off, like jack four off and down, queen three off and down, ten four off. Stuff like that.
I'm like, opening like queen seven off from the button.
Yeah, from the button, like off suit eight. And ten four off, not really, but the. What surprises me here, the most forty big blind, we still just raised to two big ones.
Yeah, it makes me wonder.
We play almost any two here, right?
Yeah, I'm three point five there, actually, I'm never using two.
Well, like, three point five, I think is good when you're playing blind versus blind, but it's different when your heads up, like.
Clearly.
Every. Ever, like, I mean, you gotta fight for every pot, so I guess it probably just gets expensive if you start.
Uh, makes sense, you just wanna go two X and get with it with almost your range.
Yeah, keep your ranges really wide, right? I think you might be able to raise this as a bluff sometimes, like, maybe it's gonna like limp raise, this is one of its bluffs. Probably a high frequency call, though, I don't know. It's not gonna jam, jamming's too much, right? Nope, JK. It does raise it, it's just, it just jams.
Okay.
Uh, so we played call, I think, did he, I'm sorry, you have to help me, who has the first action? Yeah, you gotta bet then.
Yeah, I'm betting.
Or do you, or do you have to bet? I don't know.
It's pretty dynamic, so that's why I wanna bet.
Yeah, that's kind of the reason it made me think of, that's the reason it made me second guess betting.
I feel like he's missing the C bed here, I don't know.
Well, if we do, if we do bets, since it's such a dynamic board, do we just wanna bet small, so we don't kinda trip ourselves up and get into a tricky situation later?
I would probably go three one or three. I would probably go four point seven.
You know, so like, my idea with this is, it's probably like not a three street hand, right? I'm kind of of the mindset of betting smaller checking, I almost like checking, I think.
I see checking as a merit, but I don't think we check a lot of top pairs.
Maybe not, right? Maybe not.
So just cause you bet. Just cause you bet large, doesn't mean you're making it a three street hand, right? Like, you can bet if he calls, you're gonna find a lot of checks on the turn.
Yeah, you're just. The bigger the pot gets, the harder the streets get to play with, like, your marginal made stuff, which, you know, sure, we have top pair, but we don't know. But like you said, the board is very dynamic, so that, that would make me apprehensive for building a pot here.
I don't mind betting small.
I think small's okay. But checking, well, okay, so look, there's some polarization there, like, it's, there's some merit to what you're saying, kid. It either goes high check. Or like it bets a little bit larger, and that's like, that's just what the whole range is doing there, apparently.
So. We're mostly checking. Or betting our best aces.
Yeah, it's pretty polarized strategy.
Ten eight and point seven here, the bottom of the ring, not really.
Probably have spade and a straight all.
Yeah, 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 they're opening it in gut shots with probably a spade. Yeah.
Spade?
Not even, yeah, yeah, mostly a spade.
Mostly spade, yeah.
So it's just targeting probably like, maybe queen X, jack X to get folds, maybe king X.
Yep. Okay, so we either chip or bet kind of thing. So we're gonna be very polar here. Okay, so this is a check. Figured.
Look at this, all right, now we gotta call.
Yeah.
Not a great card. Not a great card, I think you might call because you have a spade. But.
Sucks.
It sucks.
I don't know, I don't think it sucks, I think we're just.
I, the three spades are relevant to me, folding.
Alright, everybody's right.
I would call with this spade, fold without a spade, let's see the other ace two, yeah. No spade. And then spade. Yeah.
The highest frequency.
Frequency is higher with this spade.
Yeah. So it makes a marginal difference, but.
How much more do you make if you have like the eight of spades?
The eight?
Yeah, so we have the eight, that's just an eight of spades.
Well, it goes from like point zero five to point three three, so it's like. Yeah, as the spade gets better. The value becomes better.
Yeah.
Sure. I like raising this, oh wait, just all in, you're only.
All the cookies.
Just all in here. Sure, good game. Uh, okay, two big blinds, I guess we can go all in. Too big, one point five, we're up in the ante, I'm all in.
What the heck?
It's a thirty or stack, it's a thirty or stack.
You're not folding, you fold this, you're gonna draw nine.
What kind of strategy do we pull off here? What's the worst hand we show?
I'm shoving like seventy five, eighty, eighty five percent of range.
You should be jamming a lot here, because if you fold, you're all in next hand.
Yep.
AKA everything.
What?
Which?
Not surprising.
Have you ever seen a strategy like that, all in any?
Yeah, definitely, you're putting in one big blind to win three.
That's the thing. The math just completely breaks it right here, right? Like, it just, it doesn't matter what your hand is. Like a random.
Does he fold three deuce off?
Right, like, what if he makes a mistake and actually folds something there?
We have dominated.
We have dominated.
Yeah, uh, you can call here and you can raise here, I kinda like just raising.
Two X.
I don't think we raised much at this stack that, well, no, we do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do.
We just saw we're raising like sixty percent when we had thirteen, I think.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, it's also.
It gets to a point when it's shorter, like maybe seven to eight big blinds, that I think we don't really raise anymore.
I think the stuff along the hair axis is gonna wanna limp a lot more.
Hmm.
Right, looking at queen nine.
Oh.
And king eight is yours, though.
Was Tim right? Alright, cool.
When we get up to around thirteen, it changes a lot, right?
Yeah, and probably like having a raising range here isn't terrible, but it's all, you know, it's, yeah, if you're too big blinds away.
Prefers a limp jam strategy, it's what it looks like.
So twelve big blinds, we don't men raise, twelve and a half.
Not really.
Go to thirteen.
Oh, and there it's starting to creep in. At twelve and a half, so it's gonna come in a lot in the next like big blind.
Thirteen?
Really, fifteen looks to be, I bet it's gonna be fifteen is where you really start to. To really start to mix.
Ah, see, it's thirteen and a half.
I shove too much in these spots.
So what is it, like thirteen big blinds and less?
Basically.
So when did it get to sixty, was it, did we have fifteen I had?
Hey. So that's new to me.
Go to fifteen, real quick, free move.
Our fifteen is gonna. It's gonna men raise plenty.
What did we have where we raised sixty percent? I didn't think we were this deep.
When we raised sixty percent.
We had the one where we, the one we did earlier, we opened sixty percent. And I felt like, I thought we only had like thirteen bigs. Which is clearly wrong.
I think it was forty, I think so was right.
So the first hand when I jumped in was forty.
Hmm, yeah, I think that's right.
So we have this one. Which is fifteen, we were on the big line, we had this one forty.
Forty. Okay.
This is the one you wanna see?
Pay attention, cut.
Sure.
God, that raises a lot, though.
So limp. And then what? We don't have a spade?
Were we limping all of our pairs?
Yeah. Yeah, pretty much.
We probably get to bet.
Yeah, this hand is just trash, though, no interaction, there's no runner.
After bet here.
Bet and give up.
Like with a seven, we have, we can run a runner or straight, but with this, we can't.
I think I go one big blind, just give up.
All this is shit, hi guys.
I think that's an exploit. I think it's a fair strategy in life, but I think it's an exploit to check to bet here.
No. Got no idea what to do, really.
I just think we have a good, the bet, the strong equity advantage, cause if we have all the pairs in our range, he doesn't have.
Oh, for sure.
I'll be back shortly.
It's true, I guess I just put this hand on the wrong side of the polarization, cause like, uh, what I wanted to do is what you can see here with queen jack, jack ten, jack nine, even ten nine, mostly checking. Okay, so very polarization here.
We have a bunch of four X here, I didn't think about that. And then I've stuff around that can make sometimes the strength.
Yeah, well, he has all the four X too.
And then a six or a seven, that is the upper end of the street, ah, it makes sense now what we're doing, I understand. So we're betting cards that could make us trade somehow.
Yeah, like that.
Five or six or seven.
That is intuitive, and then I think the next hands above that, which is why I wanted to use this, is like, this is to be a zero equity bluff. This would fit into that bucket.
Could it make the straight, like, yeah, it could, right?
No.
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 No, that's what I was saying at the start.
Yeah, I just look at this as a zero equity, this goes in my zero equity bluff bucket.
But it's.
I think it's like, we're, we're building value from the top down, we're building bluff from the bottom up, we have.
I don't, I don't think.
This is in the block side.
I don't think it's necessarily zero equity. I mean, cause if we hit, if we hit an eight or nine on the turn.
Yep, exactly.
Which could be good.
I understand that, but what I'm thinking about, the buckets in my range, to me, in my mind, when I'm betting this, I have, this is just a pure bluff, I have no equity. I mean, I can't continue, I have no straight draw equity, no flush draw equity, they're low cards, so like high card comes or not, over help will be really, so you need to hit like, exactly, an eight, an eight or an eye, often it's not even a spade, right, so.
As your blind versus blind in a wide range, like your king high and your queen high still have some showdown, which is why I think your eight nine gets in the betting bucket. And the other ones are checking more.
It was the, the queen high and jack high had, had showdown value, actually, the king high is betting for value.
Yeah.
Not even showdown value.
What do we do at six big blind or five big blind?
I think this is close to a jam.
If it was suited, I would definitely rip it.
Maybe this is the bottom, bottom with which for fault?
Yeah, suited is a snap jam. The deal, the thing that's counterintuitive about these short stack jam spots is, of course, when we get called, we're not in great shape. But sometimes they fold, and then we pick up a big blind for free, and that is beautiful.
Do you think this is a? How, how much range are we showing here? What, what are your guesses, guys? How many percent?
All suited hands and off suit sevens.
So that's like sixty five percent, you think?
Think even eighty will be.
I guess the shell, we gotta go with two gap, oh. I was like, it's a gapper, so it's like, eh, one gapper, yeah.
So. We were close, right?
Yep.
Off suit sixes and.
Seventy five? Somebody said, Peter, I think you said seventy five percent.
Yeah. Off suit sixes.
Ooh, not all those faded hands are ripping, by the way.
Hey Louis, can you show the calling range for a big blind? Because I think most times it's best to shove any two here versus.
Yeah, I strongly agree, cause.
It is the same, okay, he calls a bit tighter. That's a calling range. On the field, they're not going so wide. All of them.
So, I guess if we put down seventy to ten percent, we have any two push or close to it.
Yeah, I guess. Can even go wider.
I call basically.
Call. I would, I would just call here.
I like calling king five.
Me?
I was so tempted to rip.
I would drip off some aces, but off some kings, I don't know.
I think, yeah.
Oh.
It's a clear bluff.
The exception. So, okay, we can do that, and we can do these two a little bit, and then the good old queen five. We could reach some queen six suited. So low pairs, off suit aces. Positive, is it? We have, this is twenty days. We're using a mixed strategy, men raising with the the best and the worst. Okay, so I probably don't men raise enough of these as well. Queen five, queen four, men rings, then jam this one or men raise it. Okay.
Yeah, your high low combos with a blocker that can get better queens and kings to fold.
So this is like different now, we're kinda capped, cause we don't have any pairs now.
Yeah, but we do have a lot of sixes, that's true.
So I'm gonna check this one. The five's decent.
It's kind of an option to, to check raise.
Possibly. The king eight would definitely wanna check raise. King five, less.
So what's our betting range here? Do we have a betting range, or we're just a big blind and we check it out?
I think it's just.
I think we mainly check a lot, I basically would simplify to checking hundred percent here.
It's just gonna be stuff to wrap around, there's sevens and sixes, right?
Yeah. I think a big line is still checking range even in zone. And he.
We would have some spots. Like if we have like twelve, fifteen big blinds that we slow place in like aces and stuff, and then that gives us more value, but like, we're just so capped here.
Would we raise a hand like king eight of spade?
I would.
Yep, I think it's pretty nice. Something like this, I mean, the thing that's bad about it is that the king high is a little too good to bluff with, like, maybe I wanna bluff with like jacket, you know?
Well, if you bluff with a low king, you get better kings to fold.
Jacket's a slam dunk, cause you can make it straight, too.
Yeah, exactly, well, this may can make a straight, you know? But it can make the super straight, yeah.
Okay, jacket of what?
All of them, all of them.
Honestly, at this stacked up, I don't think the suits are extremely important.
What do we do with seven Xer? Do we call them or we raise them?
We wanna raise some proportion, but I think we wanna, the classic thing where we don't wanna blow him off of his like ace size king highs, maybe we call those ones, so we can cooler him on a turn to revert ace or king. Maybe, uh, get more aggressive with lower sevens, cause they're still not worried about getting dominated, like.
That's the thing, SPR is so small, and if you have a seven, I'm not sure if you raise.
Well, it'll be.
No, you want some, you need some for value, and you wanna build bluffs around it. Six is raised this for value as well, sorry.
Interesting to see how much ICM changes the strategy. It doesn't seem to. We're still ready for our sevens.
If you guys have a check raise strategy based on bluffs, then you have to include value here, and that has to.
Exactly.
Did I call? And then we're gonna raise upper dangler, like we guessed, the eight X, but not so much with the king. See, we said king eight of spade, I said that. Not so much.
So the off student is in there, so it's kinda just breaking down, I think it's trying to preserve the value of the back doors.
You said then that king I was a little too good, maybe you were right.
Well, no, but king eight off is doing, it's trying to preserve the back doors, looking king eight off.
Right.
So it's still in there.
And a hand like what we had, king five off, pure fold. And then a hand like king five suited, if you have the back door, you just call. And then ten eight. I'm under the impression that it's not raising backdoor flushes very much.
Right, it's in fact trying to get passive with them, trying to preserve them.
If we raise ten eight, do we go with it? Are we running our equity?
Yes. Hundred percent.
Think so?
I, pretty much, I mean, not that we're necessarily gonna like try and bet shove, but.
He's not even going anyway, he's gonna click.
Yeah. I think in practice, people fast play stuff so much here, but the solver has a lot of room to play.
So we click it back when he raises, is that what I'm looking at?
No, that's the original strategy.
Oh. What do we do when he clicks it? I mean, it's easy to find check raises, but I often, I'm unsure what to do facing further aggression. It starts folding, the offsuit I was looking at, honestly.
That makes sense.
So. Hold this one.
Two Evers with the gun or gotta just.
Call with the king five of spade. And then raise with like jacket.
I wanna limp this hand.
I think this rips.
Close, I would push it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would limp as well.
It's close, oh, it's exactly the same, maybe, yeah, it's gonna.
Yeah. I think like. We're, we're either pushing or limping.
Jack nine, okay. Gonna be better.
All you pushes. We call off of this now.
Hold, hold.
Okay, but what's our worst call in the jack eggs area?
I think it's pretty easy, cause I think it's basically the ones that are above our shoving range, that's why we.
Yeah, we have queen.
We have like, queen jack offsuit, exactly, hands that are above our shoving range.
Jack ten off?
Uh, we shut that, I think.
So jacket's the worst one that we didn't mix shove limp, I think.
Exactly. Um, I think I'm, might be a jacket, jack nine. We're mixing with jack nine, we're calling off with ten eight.
Although I think, I think we did shove once, but.
Mixing.
Alright, we shut half of it.
Yeah, well, I see the next half, it's pure forbidding.
Well, yeah, people, people don't defend enough, so that should print. Fold. I don't know, it's close, I think it's fold.
Cool, yeah, I fold this one.
Nine six suited.
Yep. No, not even, no, less than that.
Nine six is a rip. Nine fire.
We're facing a jam, though.
But in case if the opponent is shoving so wide as solver. Which is never the case.
Yeah, exactly, in reality, you need to move up two pips, cause they're so tight. Okay.
Well, big blinds, ten five off, I'm landing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred, hundred percent left. Fold, just fold, this is pure trash. We have lots, no, we have.
Point five big blind.
What do you do with ten six off?
Fold.
Seven calls.
Up seven.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I probably get sticky with ten six.
Even sevens are mixing a little bit, or worse, sevens.
Yep.
A solid eight here. Wow, wow, wow.
That's a problem, we're crushed. He's got jack high.
Call.
Nine five.
Definitely, it's only four big blinds. It's a quarter, one we looked at a second ago, it's like five, something big blinds, it's a huge difference.
No, oh my god.
And it.
Nine five off suit.
Or you can even knit jail.
Nine five off suit.
Now, I think about pay, it can make it straight, so nine four O, I'm folding, nine five O, I'm pulling.
Oh my god.
And I probably would make that mistake with somebody's offsuit hands, too, that can make straights.
It makes four hundreds of a big blind, you gotta get it in there.
Against the guy who's shoving GTO appropriately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nine five off, okay, I'm guessing, I'm all in.
Not so bad against ten six.
Uh, rip it.
Oh, I don't know, I think it, this stacked up, it's more like seven, six.
Nah, you're insane, Ken.
Seven four. I think seven three.
Yeah.
We have that interesting strategy here.
We just looked at something similar to this, seven.
I don't wanna men raise this, though, I wanna limp this.
Shit, it was all ripping.
So raise.
Okay, raises.
Alright.
Raises.
Alright, so.
It's not dripping, Ken.
You know, ripping, you need a better hand than this.
Seven. Yeah, it's in the bluff range to raise.
Okay.
So we're gonna. Five percent to rape this, the low suited stuff. It's like the tiny boomerang we see on other.
Yeah, we needed a name to left side, so the right side is a boomerang, what's the left side? It's like a, it's a wedge, is it a wedge?
It's just, it's high cards. Kings, queens, stacks.
But you kind of see it's like it's all the offshoot. It's like King, Queen off all the way down to King five off that narrows down to ten eight off. It's kind of a wedge.
Yeah.
You're gonna fall through it.
Heart and spades. I'm definitely betting. I don't know what I want to do with this. I got a gun.
Oh, I'm betting. Oh, I'm betting.
One big blind, I guess.
I don't know.
Seven high and a gutty. I'm betting.
In position when they checked to me, I don't know if the solver agrees with this, but I bet a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Me too.
Oh, yeah.
We're probably betting fifty-five percent of range. I don't think I want to put this one in there.
Oh, my God, I do. I like strongly do. And if you have a five or six X, we have a we have a live.
Yeah, but we bet us our cells from our equity was not so bad, in my opinion. We have an overcard to the six to the five. We have a gut shot.
We have, yeah.
I don't want to bet this because if he raised, we have to fold anything. So I don't like betting here a lot, but maybe I'm completely wrong.
So Tim, you wanna, no, Dominique, you wanna check this?
I would check, yes. We're in position. We can call a turn, maybe. A lot of runouts. Every um.
We have kind of a draw and we can't stand the raise, right?
Yes.
I can't check. Yeah.
Okay, that's the over bet is the fold, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you got us.
Limp. Oh, maybe this is polar.
I live.
Fifty bigs. Yeah, it's fifty fifty bigs. I would. I have a min raise. Hmm, no.
Jack four, Jack five maybe, but Jack two, Jack three is kind of like.
The deeper we are, the more we limp.
Now, there we go.
Opposite.
Don't know what's going on here, guys. This just happens to be. This just happens to be one below our range. Okay, limp this one and raise everything.
I'm checking.
Yeah, okay.
That's a lot. I bet now.
Yeah, I throw in a bet now.
Really?
Wanna go one?
Five.
No, polo.
Yeah, one point five, two point two five, something like that.
No, three four.
Oh, what you guys are doing. What? I wouldn't bet here. Think if we had the Jack of spades. Or the Jack of hearts.
Yeah, that might make more sense.
Unless maybe it's considering Jack Kai is a um. I see. It's exactly that. Jack of spade or Jack of hearts.
And it does go polar.
But yeah, though, if you bet, you go for it. What's the most the preferred size here is? Well, it's slivers checking most of the time, right? But when you go, you go like kind of big. Three point four is an over bet here.
Yeah.
Over bet with your aces. Check this one. The deuce. Do we value better deuce here?
No way.
I would.
No.
No, it's too thin.
Too thin, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not. He's not calling with queen eye, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, spades maybe. I don't know.
Do them.
Oh, man, he actually binked the deuce, so we would we would get called and we would dominate him.
I think this raises long. It's probably mixing forty, sixty. Sixty percent limp, forty percent raise.
This is probably a very heavy. At sixty, heavy, I'd raise. I think range is raising a lot here.
I had it backwards.
Yeah, the deeper you get, the more raises you have.
Heads up. But yeah, see, Chippy base the opposite. I mean, ICM here, it seems to be different. We raise a lot more.
We have more ICM heads up.
There is no ICM and heads up.
Isn't this a? Oh, well, there's still some, right?
No. Nope. You're playing a cash game where the total amount of chips equals the difference between the second place payout and the first place payout.
So then it's a bit closer to a button range.
Yeah, even wider. Even wider because you only have to go through one person.
And you have to position the whole hand to say the way. Yeah.
I would bet here and I think we can call a raise.
I don't know. Yeah.
If we add one spade in our hands, it would be a snap bet, but I still think this is a bet.
Yeah, the fact that we're so deep, we do want to get some money in for the many, many cases where we bank a four or a nine.
Yeah, say we make this straight by some miracle. We want to be able to play for a little something.
Our our. By some miracle, we're gonna hit it thirty-three percent of the time, right?
Also. This is an eight die board. There's a bunch of key cards for like the key cards. I didn't look at them, but I think we go polar on this kind of board when we bet, so maybe two.
So Louis, the the flip side is that we're sixty bigs deep. When all the money goes in, I think you want to have spades in your hands.
Yeah, sure, but I would still do we not.
Like, I think at twenty bigs deep, at twenty bigs deep, I think it's a lot more reasonable, but like.
And uh. Yeah, but with the open ender, we just can put a normal size or smaller size because we can call easier race. A bit higher.
Okay, so one. Also, the ace might still be good. Well. It's not that thing very often. Is it that thing polar or not?
Yes.
I I'm guessing a lot of the aces are checking.
Yeah, could you have that showdown value, the ace?
We never go small here. It's like two or three. Or a little bit of one point six, but it's like two big blind or three big blind. So we this is a polar board, even it's a.
Okay.
And then.
And it's the classic things like we're hammering it with the low overboard overpairs, like nines and tens hammering.
Spade in our hand. We said it. We said it, but yeah.
Yeah, ace eight hammering it. Uh, King eight hammering.
Okay, so these are pairs. Everything else needs a spade, right? Unless you have like Ace Jack. His Jack doesn't need the spade. Why is that?
Better for value.
Value, better for my worst aces.
Yeah, so it's betting the even the best aces. It's not worrying about folding worse. It's just, yeah, value betting, right?
Yeah, when uh when ranges are this wired, that's that's value betting.
I mean, before you close the chart, I have one question and overall question I struggled today with. Um. This is a good example, in my opinion. Um, we have a lot of combos which are splitting in betting and checking. How do you approach this GTO? I I can't implement it in my game. I don't know when to check or to bet. Because I mostly use full combos for check or bet. I hope you understand what I mean.
Yes, there's a couple of different ways to go about it. You could use a randomizer. If you ask a professional like Matt Affleck, that's what he's gonna tell you. Use a randomizer, try to guess their frequencies. Uh, if you ask a professional like me, who plays probably in smaller stakes than Matt, but you know, uh I will say if there's a sliver, you should go for it. Okay, because you win, but with aggression at this game. And if people just overfold by a little bit versus the sim, whatever you do is gonna print. So people are like. They like to to like take the passive approach very often. They're gonna be in the box, either checking or folding. You want to be the guy who bets a lot. So when I see here a hand like King five off, I see it's betting. I don't know, thirty percent and checking seventy percent. If there's a silver, I'm gonna bet it. And I'm gonna try to find the reason why we bet. For example, here it's clear it's a spade. Right? If you have a spade. So what I would do here is I would bet the spade full frequency and I would reduce the ones without the spade to a lot less.
That's exactly how I did it. But I would probably just try to know if I know that heuristic, I'm checking all the ones that aren't spades and betting all the ones that are.
Exactly.
Yeah.
If so, if you have an idea of what's it's trying to do, you try to do that. That's basically because you're never gonna be able to get this kind of strategy. Also, it goes down. I get this more because I play more live. It goes down to knowing your player too. And sometimes you can get a read live. Like if I get if I get a something that just tells me that he's weak, I'm I'm gonna bet the slivers.
I think another thing for me is I'm just.
I'm just asking because of GTO because I have always the problem uh with these frequencies. Sometimes.
Well, yeah.
So shallow. Okay, it's a problem like, but in this chart, it's forty-four percent of checking, but it's spread all over all combos, so.
If if he. If he use a HUD, you can also tell like if they're tight. Bet it. If if they're if they're calling station, then maybe use the checking.
But let's assume he's a super strong wreck. However, and he plays hundred percent and ninety-nine percent GTO. So what can I do? I just.
I have a.
As I as I tell you, as I tell you, Dominique, you try to figure out what the solver is doing.
I think this this is it's a good idea.
Yeah. Once you know, you have a vague idea that here you want to have a spade here when you bet. And if you go full frequency when you have a spade and you don't really bet these. And it. If he is a super strong wreck. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, Louis, I strongly agree with that. Like going with the general tendencies. Like it's checking a lot of King, Queen, King, Jack. I'm checking King, Queen there hundred percent. Like, I understand that that affects my balance, but it's not true that I never, you know, I'm betting a king. I'm betting kings as well. So I have those in my bet line, but I'm betting kings, you know, that are more like a high-low. Like ditto, you know, like it's betting aces a little bit. I'm checking aces a hundred percent there. It's checking back a bunch of eight X. I'm betting my eight X is almost a hundred percent, you know?
I'm under the impression that we go all in here for this one.
Oh, yeah, easy all.
Queen eight, queen nine. That part of.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you're you're betting. You're going on with much worse than this.
Oh, okay, okay. See, I thought we still lent a lot.
Nah.
Too short to limp.
Too short to limp.
Okay, so. We're we're set. We we should actually see if we can find out, find the crossover. Like, is it seven, eight? So let's. Because at thirteen, we limp a lot. And at six, we're shut. We we should try to find where that crossover point is. So at six. At ten, it's limping. But it's limping and then it's shoving this area. So we have queen eight, so I thought. It's shoving the it's shoving the wedge and the boomerang. At nine.
Yes, thank you. It's make you're making it happen for me.
It's making sense now.
At nine, we go for that. At eight. See, it's gradually gonna go to jam everything. Yeah, it's probably gonna be somewhere around seven where it stops limping a lot. Seven and a half. Seven. Oh, looks like six is the actual crossover.
Do you really think there's much EB to gain? In these shallow stacks to see what is the limp or jam strategy? I just go over to jam.
No, just want to have a vague idea of what what we should be.
Yeah, no, I agree. If you simplify this to jam or fold, I don't think that's terrible. It's at eight big blinds. I think it's fine. It's very funny. That's what I play.
If you have some weak opponents, for sure, you can do some stuff, but if you have a solid player and have maybe six other tables or more open, I just go over to, you know, jam or fold.
Twelve, big nine, five, four. I would limp.
Yeah.
Bet with the spade in my hand.
I have no.
I don't know. It's it's pretty trashy.
I have a spade. Good enough.
I was giving up.
Well, you can't give up heads up. Wait, is this a one and done or? Hmm, good question.
I hope so.
I don't know. The fact that we checked flop and he checked again, kind of.
We bet on the flop. I went with one big line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. You did go with it. Oh, I might want to give up.
With ten parents. No, okay.
Very good.
Yeah, it's good to give up. And the deuce, chip chip on the turn. Checks again on the river.
So suppose we didn't have a spade, would you jam?
Hmm, no.
If I didn't have a spade here, I'd rip it. Or bet pot. I would go big. I would bet something large. I I don't have to rip. I think I could bet like pot and get like high cards to fold. I don't think he ever has a queen here. I don't think he has a ten.
He called a flop back, Ken.
One big blind.
Some form of equity.
He has nine highs, eight, nine, right? Stuff like that that we're beating. He has uh some King X high cards, Ace high card. Like, he's got high cards I want to fold at this point.
And but in real life, what 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 hand, what uh do we want to represent here? We don't bet the turn.
Uh, we have jacks. We can go for value now. Uh, I think we have some queens that might go.
They we bet all on all on the turn already, in my opinion.
When the ten pairs, it's not. I think we're gonna start checking jacks uh because you could have a queen, you could have a ten. I think we go with thin value with the jack and I'm gonna bluff this if I don't have a spade. For like.
So we turn our check now into a bluff or in the strong value better?
Three big lines. Three big lines, I'm going if I didn't have a spade.
Okay.
I'd let's see what's what's that word because I honestly, I would give up here.
So what if we didn't?
If you're gonna do it, do it with come in.
A little go pot. What if we didn't have a spade? Is it any better? Because I said I would do it if I didn't have a spade.
Does it a little bit more without the spade, it seems. Whereas with the spade, it does it less.
So all the ones without a spade, I can throw my junk and I could do it more often when I have a spade, right? I mean, that's how I think about it.
There is bluffing from this portion of the deck, but it's seventy percent of the time we give up. And then we have lots of queens in our range to play with. Or overcards.
Did he call King high?
Didn't see the result. Yeah, you go.
Oh, he revered it to. We had King two.
No, no, no. Yes.
Three.
I think I I would fold this. This might be in that small. I think we limp almost anything here.
Connected stuff wants to try to see a flop.
And we pip like we deep up like ninety, ninety-five percent.
I, yeah, I thought the I thought the folds were a little bit higher, like six, three, seven fours, eight fours might be out, but.
Yeah, we are in position if uh if he calls, sorry. That's the reason that you can limp a bit wider than normal.
I would fold this.
This heads up. It's not a small blind first bit like normal.
We got us.
Ah, he had a three percentage.
I'm out.
Pretty easy fold, you know?
Yeah. What do you do with nine five here?
I'm in.
Oh.
Nine five is nine five is a limp.
Two X.
Or is the jam?
Limp it.
Put them all. Oh, my God.
Yeah, after floppy are in position, that that's a lot of big difference than a normal small blind big blind spots. On the other hand, the On the other hand, the. The blinds are not in some.
He'll limp, right? Um, he's jamming a lot of his king X. He's raising a lot of pairs, like, I mean. Minus spades, I definitely would bet. Probably just.
Yeah, two back doors, so maybe you could.
Probably just kind of check this one.
I have a spade. I have to bet.
Yeah.
We have also a backdoor straight, you know?
And he, and he raised one. He clicked it back. Can we call?
No.
Uh, we have to backdoor straight, maybe.
Make it six.
We're not deep enough to chase back.
Yeah.
We're not deep enough float backdoors.
I would call. Okay, fair enough.
Calling.
We have the nine as paid. Would we call? Think so.
Hmm, less, less, I think, even.
Well, it had some calls with nine, three. Well, not really. Little bit, but not really.
If you have the nine space, you can't have the nine space.
Did he click us with jack shit?
Yep.
Yeah, with jack shit, there's similar answers.
Well, we have, now it's hard time to.
Yeah, paybacks are a bitch, dude. We're gonna suck out on here.
Nickel. We're well ahead.
Yeah.
Well ahead. Oh, come on, three on the flop. Okay. What do you guys want to do here?
What?
What about Ace deuce offsuit? This might be part of, this, this might be part of the wedge where it does some raising. Cause I think it did some raising off the aces. I don't think so. If it, if it's a raise, it's a sliver. Nope.
I think ace two offlimps too. I think ace three off raises.
Ace three is a null and. Oh, wait, no, you're, it's suited. You're right. I was looking at the, I was thinking of the offsuit side. Yeah, these.
Yeah, me too, same. You have so much more.
Also, remember our first note, uh, when less than thirteen and a half, we don't really have a min raise. Now, Louis, for some reason, I was thinking it was offsuit. I. I just totally blanked that it was suited. Yeah.
It's too suited. You can shove it. It's the same EB, so.
I kind of like betting here because if he has a history of clubs, he's gonna fold.
Does he have a history of clubs in range?
Yeah, he's three diamonds, for example.
Doesn't he just rip all of his aces when we, uh, oh, when we limp? Does he raise all the, all the X rays?
I don't think so.
Raising or, um.
Not the suited ones. Oh, yeah, okay, okay. They're all raising. All of them.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try to get the showdown, honestly.
So yes, only worse hands than ours, almost.
Yeah, makes sense.
Oh.
We bet for value because we get calls by queen eye.
Yeah, I guess a lot of worse hands still got a call, a lot of flush flush draws and shit, straight draws.
Oh, my goodness. Ten eye, he's calling ten eye sometimes.
Yeah.
Ten eyes, a backdoor straight, backdoor flush.
Oh, it's supposed to call with jack four off.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, so we went check, check, bet small. Two? Well, you're right, small. Too greedy.
Very smart.
We fold. Okay, okay.
We got on the call with six high on the flop, or did we check?
We checked.
Well, I'd. Nothing to think about here.
Okay, I think that's good for heads up.